I want to call to order the July 22, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome those of you that are here in the council chambers tonight. Welcome. I want to also welcome those who might be watching us on Channel 10, those who might be watching us on their computers, also those who might be listening to us on their radios or might be listening to us on their computers. So you're all welcome. This is your city council, so we hope you'll participate in meetings any way you can. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask Clerk take the roll call of council members.
Cummings.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Pansky.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Tower.
Here.
Present seven.
Okay, I'd ask everybody to rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance that will be led by Councilmember Cummings tonight.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. Our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that takes us to three public hearings which we have tonight. For each of the public hearings, I'll read it three times, and as I'm going through these one by one, I ask that if you have any comments on particular one, as I'm reading it through three times, you come up to microphone. The microphone is on. Okay, the first one is to approve final resolution vacating, well, I should say, Resolution 14-323, approve final resolution vacating portion of Dakota Street north of West Third Avenue. Resolution 14-323, approve final resolution vacating portion of Dakota Street north of West Third Avenue. Third and final reading, Resolution 14-323, approve final resolution vacating portion of Dakota Street north of West Third Avenue.
Name is Bernie Pitts, live at 617 West Irving, Oshkosh. The vacating of the street would be just another rubber stamp of the city council if you approve this. Begin with, the city took my property on the west side of that street under ediment domain, and as of yet, they have not fulfilled the obligations that they could take the property under ediment domain. In order to take it under ediment domain, you had to give a relocation plan to the Department Administration in Madison. That was not fulfilled. They have not fulfilled any of the obligations which the city was obligated to do in by taking my property. Now, the road has already been taken, and I'll show you, I don't know how you put these on here.
Just put them on. It's right there.
That is what is left of Dakota Street. This is what you're voting on tonight. It is another rubber stamp of the city of Oshkosh. You are, the engineering department asked you to vacate this street, and by so doing so, we have four going through with proper procedure on our ediment domain. The city is seeking to enrich themselves on the backs of the former property owners and the property owners as they still own it. I think before you proceed any farther on this, you should live up to what the state statutes requires the city to do on ediment domain. You cannot take a parcel without going to the Department Administration, and our property on Third and Dakota has not been listed in the Department Administration as to relocation plan. Therefore, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen of the council, I think you should lay this over until the proper procedure is done, and then you can see that it was nothing more than an attempt to rubber stamp something that's already been done by the engineering department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward and talk about Resolution 14-323? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it to council and look for a motion and a second on Resolution 14-323.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
I would direct this to either Ms. Lawrence or Mr. Roloff related to the comments about ediment domain.
City is in full compliance with state law. We acquired the property legally. Mr. Pitts was represented by council.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-323.
Cummings.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Takes us to Resolution 14-324, approve amended final resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer and sanitary sewer laterals adjacent to Sawyer Creek, Foxtail Lane to Clairville Road. Second reading, Resolution 14-324, approve amended final resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer and sanitary sewer laterals adjacent to Sawyer Creek, Foxtail Lane to Clairville Road. Third and final reading, Resolution 14-324, approve amended final resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer and sanitary sewer laterals adjacent to Sawyer Creek, Foxtail Lane to Clairville Road. I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-324.
Cummings.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Takes us to Resolution 14-325, approve amended final resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer laterals, water main and water laterals, 20th Avenue. Second reading, Resolution-325, approve amended final resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer laterals, water main and water laterals, 20th Avenue. Third and final reading, Resolution 14-325, approve final amended, approve amended final resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer laterals, water main and water laterals, 20th Avenue. Third and final reading, Resolution 14-325, approve final amended, approve amended final resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer laterals, water main and water laterals, 20th Avenue. I see no one coming forward. Bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-325.
Cummings.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, this is a time for citizen statements to council. It's a time when you can comment on something that may be positive going on in the community, something you have a concern about. If you'd like to come up, the microphone is open. We ask a number of things. One is that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes, that you give us your name and address when you come to the microphone, direct your comments to council directly. Can't talk about anything on the agenda. You can make those comments when the agenda items come up, and there's to be no election hearing. Anybody like to come forward?
Hello, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Tim Finley. I spoke a couple of sessions ago. I appreciate the opportunity to do this, and...
Excuse me, address, please, sir.
1315 Bowen Street. I wanted to kind of start off by just reiterating some of the things I said before about who your neighbors are on Bowen Street. I know that you guys are part of our community as well, and I want this to be a discussion as other people from Bowen Street come forward to have concerns about the project that's going on there, about our neighbors and how we can do things better in our community. I know that that's what you guys want to do, and that's what we want to do too. Now, that being said, we're not public speakers, so sometimes when I say things, they may not be correct, it may not be the right format, and we apologize ahead of time, but this is who we are, and we're real people. We are young families, we are elderly couples, we're veterans on our street, we're people that live on limited incomes. So this is really passionate for us, and it's a very big concern for us because the special assessments on the city, on the street of Bowen are 10% of the value of our homes in a lot of cases. So this is a huge chunk of equity that's come out of us, so it's a very big concern for us. So, that being said, when I spoke last time, I had two main concerns, and one of them was the interest that's being charged to the residents that can't afford to pony up $7,800 or whatever the amount balance is of the special assessment, and it being a 6% that is charged to us, where the city is financing its portion of it on a 3%, basically is what we're selling municipal bonds for. So that is a concern to me because the city is basically, unless I'm interpreting this incorrectly, profiting off of the residents and our own neighbors. And I don't think that's fair, especially given the concerns that I have about, or that we should all have about the income levels of some of the people in our neighborhoods. That is a major concern for us. We have people that live below the poverty level, and a $7,800 assessment is absolutely devastating to a lot of people that you're going to hear from tonight. So please consider that part of it. The second was, I actually said something about wondering if there was a process for hardship application, which there was not. Now, I wonder if there's any updates or if there's anything that's been done in that realm that might be an opportunity for some of the people that are on our street to, and the rest of our community, to find a way to move forward. Anybody speak to that in the council?
Mayor, I'll speak on it.
Sure. Currently, our ordinance is in place on street assessments, and it's also in place on how we charge for all of the projects. We just approved three more assessments. Until we change the ordinance, we can't change any of this. So council would have to come back and put an ordinance in place that would address all of your concerns. You can't pick one project over another project over another project. I think the city managers explained why we charge 6%. That too is our ordinance and how that is. The 3% that you were talking about, that's all bonding for all of the street projects, so that's citywide. That's why we can get the rate at that rate because of the dollar amounts that are involved in that type of situation. So unless we change the ordinance, we can't do anything with this proposal or anything connected to Bowen Street. And at this point in time, when council had a workshop about a year and a half ago on this same issue, it was decided that this is the best way to go for the citizens of Oshkosh at this time.
So if we could just ask that maybe for your assistance in some way of restarting the conversation or readdressing it, because I know that a lot of communities in the Fox Cities are having the discussion about whether to apply other sorts of assessments to, whether it's motor vehicle registration or something else, to alleviate this type of problem where it's basically what we're doing is we're rolling the roulette wheel, and if it falls on double zero and it's you, it, you know, it really hurts. Like I said, that, especially when you're on a fixed income, I don't want to keep reverting back to that because I understand that has no bearing really in a way that everything is drawn out from the city, but in the same breath, it is a huge problem, and I think that we owe it to ourselves to do better as a community in this issue. We're really sticking it to the people that can't have it stuck to them, and I think we can do better. And I would welcome any advice from the council because you guys have more experience in this than we do, and we would really like you as our neighbors to step in and help us to try to restart the conversation to moving towards a better solution than rolling the roulette wheel.
Okay. Let's, okay. Don't get into a long discussion.
Yeah, I don't want to get into it either, but, you know, as Mr. Herman pointed out, we have a policy that has been in effect for years and years and years, and we did review it a year and a half ago, and this council said that this is basically the best policy that we have. I've had a discussion with several of you related to how these assessments could be funded. Now, there's, and I wish that Mr. Hall were here because he explained it very well a few years ago when we had the discussion, there's two ways to do this. There's through the special assessment, or is there, there's a way of doing it on the taxes every year. And in essence, basically what it is, we could charge you, for instance, $20, or $200 for 20 years to cover the special assessment, and so when, as you said, the roulette wheel comes up, you've already paid your $4,000 for your special assessment. Or what we can do is continue on the way we have where the city funds about 90% of these projects and then passes the special assessment charges, which are for the improvements to the services that are provided to your particular property via special assessments. Now, if the council should entertain a possible change in this assessment, as Mr. Herman pointed out, it will not affect the assessment that you had. If we come forward with an assessment change next year saying what we're going to do is we're going to shift the funding to here, I can guarantee the one group that would be here in a heartbeat saying, "No, that's not fair," would be you. We understand what you're saying. The assessment policy has been reviewed several times. This is how it's been done, and this council has felt that this is the best way of doing it. Now, we understand the hardship that you say, but that has fallen on many other areas of the city as well.
Well, I mean, even if I don't personally...
This is not a time for discussion, so try and stick to the...
Well, then I'll make one final comment.
We're getting repetitive on...
I'll make one final comment, then I'll sit. I just think that as a city, we can do better than this. I don't think that, it's not personally about how much money I'm shelling out, this is about us as a community, and I think we can do better, and I didn't realize that this problem is what it is. And I do think it's a larger problem than, than I think some, than others do. So I'd ask you to please just keep an open mind when you hear the rest of the bow and citizens have their comments.
Thank you.
Did you, were you going to make a comment?
No, I wasn't going to make a comment, I think. We're getting repetitive here over the last couple of meetings, and so if we have new things, we'd like to get to them, and I know the group's asking for a meeting, which will probably be repetitive, but maybe there's time for more discussion outside of council. Go ahead. Make your comment.
Just a brief comment, Mr. Finley, and I did hear your suggestion that you made a couple of meetings ago, and I don't necessarily speak for the rest of the council here, but I think philosophically, as far as the role of government, the role of business, the role of civic sector organizations, you know, providing, providing some kind of a hardship is philanthropy in a community, and there's certainly a place for philanthropy, and there's actually plenty of organizations in the community that provide that. I think it's dangerous for government to get into the practice and the role of providing philanthropy. I would suggest, you know, the Community Foundation in town, there's a variety of other foundations, and they, those might be, some resources in order to start this conversation, but I don't know that government is a place. I mean, government is about regulatory policy and governance, and I don't know that there's a place necessarily to provide philanthropy without having to subjectively pick and choose among citizens and taxpayers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to, for everybody's information, I would encourage members of the public to take a look at the workshop. It was actually, it was over two years ago now. When you said a year and a half, I wanted to double check the date. Time flies. May 29, 2012, there was a workshop. It's on the city's website. You can call up and go through the whole thing. There was a PowerPoint presentation that was given with it. We referred to a lot of things. There is a very narrow provision in our city code regarding hardship. It's very narrow, but I bring it to your attention, but during the discussion of the workshop, we pointed out that a lot of the features that other communities use for hardship cases, we actually weaved into our own policy without calling it a hardship policy, but it in effect is a hardship policy. And I encourage you to look at that, and I'd be happy to meet with any of the residents if they wanted to follow up after that, but you really need to take a look at, we spent months on that workshop to get the council up to speed because there were several new council members at the time, and since then, we have even more new council members. So it was intended to brief the council as well as the public. May 29, 2012, it was a, it was a council workshop. Please take a look at it. I think you'll at least gain some insight and perspective, and then I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards. I'd offer that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
My name is Patricia Deener. I live at 1316 Broad. I think it was voted down and talked about, but I think maybe we should go back to sales tax on the vehicles. I know other cities are going to try to push it too because there's been a lot of people complaining about assesses and that, and I mean, sure, you got to pay 20 bucks on each vehicle, but you know, you don't have to come up with all this kind of money, and I think, I think it would, it would help in a lot of ways because I understand what they're going through. My husband and I went through it. Was it easy it was to keep the house or sell? We were in hardship. Well, we didn't have to sell it. I mean, didn't have to give it back, so we sold it. We got another one, you know, and people, it's getting worse instead of better with the economy, the financial status, but I think, like one of the mayors said in Hamilton, maybe we need to go 1.7. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
Hello, my name is Carrie Halsey. I'm at 1325 Bowen Street. I'm a fellow neighbor of our little community. I'm a full-time machine operator, and assessment is actually half of my total income each year. So like you was saying, if there's something that you guys can work with us, it would, we would be completely grateful. I honestly can't afford the assessment right now. I'm young, I'm 28. Actually, last fall, when we were notified and everything, my mom passed away. I brought her home to hospice care. I wasn't able to be more involved in putting my opinion out there. So I'm just asking, just as a general community, like, we need help. If there's any other options, it would be grateful, or I mean, greatly appreciated. That's about all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward? Maybe if there are multiple speakers, if the next speaker would like to get up and stand behind the speaker, that would be helpful.
My name is Gordon Norman, and I live on 1333 Bowen Street. I just want to make a comment on this workshop, okay? I read everything, what's written there, and different communities has a different, you know, approaches to this, to this problem of actually, this special assessment has become a problem to people because they can simply cannot, some of us simply cannot afford it, you know? And there is one point there in this PowerPoint that it says there that the city has the, let's put it authority, I can't remember the other word, okay, that to, at this discretion to fund it, fully fund the special assessment for, you know, the citizens, the citizens that they're worthy indigenous citizens, okay? Those are the special words used, and I believe the same words have been used in the city code, you know, the, whatever you adopted after the, you know, after the, this workshop. This neighborhood is a low-income neighborhood, and we would appreciate very much if the city of Oshkosh come up with some kind of a solution. We are not saying that we shouldn't, that the city should pay for everything, no. We are aware of the, of the, you know, this old infrastructure what's underneath, okay, when we were talking about last time, you know, flipping off the street. We're aware of that, and we're not shying away from it. What we think we should pay for, it's really those water and store laterals, street concrete or, you know, repayment, whatever, and sidewalks really should be paid by the city. I know, we know that the city is paying, you know, 90% of the project, but the question is, whose money city is using to pay those 90%? It's the, it's our, we pay the taxes, and that's how the city runs their 40, over 40% of their budget. And I think it would be really fair if the city council members really come up with something so we can kind of come up with a resolution for all of us so we can all benefit from it. Believe me, I'm in the same boat like this young lady here. When I saw first time my assessment, I almost fainted, and the reason is, it's a half of my annual income, and I told you that, and I'm going to repeat every time I come here. I know you don't want to hear the sad story, okay? But the thing is, it is sad. Really, it is. I wish I had more money. We all wish we had more and we don't have to bother you anymore. You know, okay, great, like the track, and that's it. We don't. The times have changed, and you all notice that, I'm sure, but you, you know, we don't want you to admit that, but we all know that, we all noticed what's going on with our economy, with our country, with everything. So we would appreciate the neighborhood of this Bowen Street from East Nevada, from East Nevada to East New York Street would appreciate if you can come up, sit with us, talk to us, give us the constructive, you know, advice, see how we can come up with something because we are the one city. One more comment before I, before I finish my, is you said that it's all across the board, right? Oh, everybody in the city has to pay this. Well, I know for fact that the Ninth Street, that the people that live on the Ninth Street when you did the reconstruction, the only thing they paid, they didn't pay for a reconstruction of the street, they paid for those, you know, squares of the sidewalk. And I know, I have friends there, they only paid for two of those. They're just for your information. So it's not really, it's not really equal for everybody, and that's what really bothers people sometimes. It's not across, you know, it's, we're not, we don't feel we're equal, like, for example, you know, it's, I don't want to use this word, but it's, it's in many ways, you know, discrimination. You're just picking choose how much the project is, let's see how much we can get. That's how we feel, and that's why we would like you to sit with us and talk so we can, you know, we can come with a constructive, you know, a resolution to this problem. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you, good evening. My name is Sandra Villalobos, and I live at 1316 Bowen Street. When Tim Finley was up here before, I think he was trying to make a point that we're not being repetitive, we're, actually, we're trying to drive home a point that people on this street have bought modest homes so that we can enjoy whatever little money we have left over, and this project is actually making us house poor. We would appreciate if there would maybe some funds from other sources, maybe at the state, federal, some other level, and we would appreciate the offer, we do appreciate the offer from Mr. Roloff, once we see the workshop from 2012, and, and like I said, we're just trying to drive home a point that, I'm a little nervous here, that this is, this is breaking the budget here, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wendy Reiner, and I live at 1409 Bowen Street, and I wanted to mention what she said about you're getting repetitive up here, but I think you have to be repetitive when you're trying to get something across and something that's passionate for you to bring it up and bring it up until, I think, a resolution is made or enough conversation is made to where people feel like they're not threatened. My husband and I bought our house in July of 2011, and it was a fairly new home, and we paid for the home. I know a big part of it was that the street that we lived on, the condition, and so we felt like with what we paid for our home that we did pay for that as well. And now, these, just a short time later, we are getting charged again with $7,000, I don't remember the exact amount, for a road that was perfectly fine. And also, it was mentioned at one of the meetings that we are not being charged for whatever they do, like ripping out perfectly good roads and pavement and things. So I wonder who's paying for that then? Somebody has to be paying for that. If I'm not paying it with my $7,000, it's coming from somewhere. And I guess, I feel like when it is said that the city is paying this amount, like it's a different entity, and it's not, that's me. I'm the city, you're the city, you're the city, we're all paying it, and so I don't, But I have to wonder that, along with that, where was the thought about the people that were living on fixed incomes and didn't have anything to pay for that? You know, it has to come up, and I'm sure that's happened before. And I'm wondering why, when that was redone, why there wasn't something put in there to say, okay, we're going to have people that are probably either going to sell their homes and, or they're going to become a burden in other ways, if, because their whole life is going to change. It's going to be life-altering because they're either going to have to leave to another place. A lot of us can't even pay health insurance now, let alone $7,000 extra dollars to, to pay for a road and a sidewalk that we're buying. So, those are the things that I want to reiterate and just make known of how we feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I've seen nobody else. Somebody else would like to go next, I'd appreciate if they'd come up and stand behind?
I'm Roger Reiner, I live at 1409 Bowen Street with my wife. Couple of things are bothering me. First of all, it's a personal thing, but I'll share it. I don't like hearing my city people saying it's okay to pass on burden because we have an ordinance that says we can't. There are people here that are definitely struggling with this. I think we need to be thinking about the solution instead of just saying, I can because I have an ordinance. You know, that's what we expect from US group. A solution for the people who are burdened by it. The other thing is, I think there's a bigger problem, and I think we're rolling ahead way too fast and way too much for the amount of money that the city has with projects. I see the debt, it's growing all the time, we don't have solutions, yet we're plowing into more and more things every day. Where's the answers to that? You know? We can just expect more assessments because we're spending more money than what we have. We need solutions to that, you know? I just don't like the way the whole thing is going. I would like to see somebody explaining how we're going to offset the debt, how we're going to stop making it larger, how are we going to get it down? You know, spending is not helping anything, and the assessments aren't either. There's a bigger problem here in this city. I also think Bowen Street would not be torn up right now if we did not need that crosspipe installed. There are many streets that have worse conditions, just as old of architecture underneath it, and they're not torn up. That pipe needed to be put in there, so that street got torn up for that reason. That's why it was a priority. I really believe that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I've seen no one coming forward. So I'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of a number of items that the administration feels are non-controversial in nature. They'll be voted on as a package unless an item is removed. An item can be removed either by a citizen or by a council member for separate consideration, if so desired. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to read through the consent agenda. As I read an item, if you want to speak to that item, I'd appreciate if you come up to the microphone. After I've gone through all the items and taken all the public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for consideration of the package that we have and for any questions or comments at that particular point in time. So I'm going to start reading through right now. Approval of bills presented by the finance director. Approval of cash report for May 2014. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from June 5, 2014. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, Vicky Sharon, for alleged injuries from falling on the sidewalk. Harry Van Damme for alleged injuries from the bleachers at Red Arrow Park. Resolution 14-326, approved spot, not, oh, this one's actually been withdrawn, went to the RDA last night, they did not pass it, so it will not be considered by the council. That takes us to resolution 14-327, approved spotlight designation, authorized redevelopment authority to accept donation of 1210 and 1212 Oregon Street. Resolution 14-328, grant utility easement to Wisconsin Public Service Corporation, Riverside Park, North Main Street to CP Avenue. Resolution 14-329, grant utility easement to AT&amp;T, approve agreement with AT&amp;T to relocate existing overhead line to underground 4th Avenue and Michigan Street, Boatworks Riverwalk Project. Resolution 14-330, grant privilege in street to Gabriel's Villa and Luther Homes of Oshkosh and Northwestfield Street, right away adjacent to 215 Northwestfield Street. Resolution 14-331, approved conditional use permit, planned development for urban green space usage, southeast corner of Ida Avenue and Franklin Street, Middle Village Association.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak to that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Tony Palmieri, 212 West Parkway Avenue. Yesterday, this resolution passed that the RDA unanimously, and it also passed with the plan commission, we're thrilled about that. When we came here a few weeks ago to get the Middle Village Plan approved, I learned the next day that some people in the community, including some members of the local media, don't know where the Middle Village neighborhood is, and so I just want to show that. The borders are Jackson, Irving, Main, and Church. And we called it Middle Village because it's pretty much in the middle between the UW-Oshkosh Campus Community and downtown Main Street. Middle Village seemed like a, like a good name for it. The parcel that you're voting on in this resolution is right here, Franklin and Ida. And actually, this park has been a goal of this neighborhood for a long time. We think this will do very, very much to build a sense of community engagement and make the neighborhood more of a neighborhood of choice for people. Just as a little bit of background, this space became available, as I think all of you know, because a house that was on the parcel tragically was burned down, got hit by lightning, and the Neighborhood Association, working with the planning department, came up with this idea of this as a location for a park. And we're just thrilled that we're at this point where the city council can vote on it, and we, we hope we get a favorable vote. Thank you.
Okay, resolution 332, approved conditional use permit, planned development for community garden, northeast corner of Central Street and West Parkway Avenue, Middle Village Neighborhood Association. Do you want to comment on that?
Actually, I'll comment, comment on both if that's okay, sit right next to each other.
Name an address, please.
Yes, Lori Palmieri, 212 West Parkway Avenue. And we've been working on this for several years now, and we're very, very grateful that we've finally come to this point. And we just want to thank the council for all their support and the anticipated big reveal next year. We also invite you to attend the National Night Out event on August 5th at the green space that we just discussed, Ida and Franklin. And thank you again.
Thank you. Resolution 14-334, approved conditional use permit downtown overlay district, standard modification, 570, oh, did I say, I skipped one. I need to go back to resolution 14-333. Approve option to purchase from Bank First National and Dragorski Development Property at southeast corner of Jackson Street and Pearl Avenue. Also, the RDA changed a little bit of the wording the night before, the day before, if you want to take a look at that, to put in that rather than having a minimum assessed value of $2 million, I mean, a minimum value of, or potential value of $2 million, that the minimum assessed value will be at least $2 million. A resolution 14-334, approved conditional use permit downtown overlay district, standard modification, 570 North Main Street, Varsity Club. Resolution 14-335, award bid for automatic passenger counters for transit division to Infodev ED, Inc. Resolution 14-336, award bid for public works contract number 14-11 to Wood Sewer and Excavating, Inc. for sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation program. Resolution 14-337, accept grant from Citizens Natural Resources Association for Sustainability Program in the amount of $2,000 and authorized sponsorship of Rain Barrel Workshop using grant funds. Resolution 14-338, support Wisconsin Department of Transportation's application for ladders of opportunity federal program funding for bus replacements. Resolution 14-339, approval of special event, the next few will be special events. Bethel Worship Center to utilize Opera House Square and Market Street for their Fox Valley Unity Praise Fest, August 2, 2014. Resolution 14-340, viral events to utilize Winnebago County Park and Sunnyview Road for their Run or Die 5K, August 9, 2014. Resolution 14-341, UW-Oshkosh Women's Center to utilize Opera House Square for their Fox Valley display of the Monument quilt, August 18, 2014. Resolution 14-342, Lord's Academy to utilize streets for their Lord's Academy Eucharistic procession, September 4, 2014. Resolution 14-343, bid to utilize city streets and Opera House Square for their downtown chalk walk, September 6, 2014. No. Resolution 14-344, approve, approval of special event, Esther, Fox Valley to utilize Opera House Square for their Freedom Summer Comes Home, September 13, 2014. Resolution 14-345, Lord's Academy Student Council to utilize streets for the Lord's Academy Homecoming Parade, October 3, 2014. Resolution 14-346, approval of block party request, armory place between Windsor Street and Crystal Springs Avenue, August 5, 2014. Resolution 14-347, approval of block party request, Bent Avenue between Algoma Boulevard and Sheridan Street, August 5, 2014. Resolution 14-348, approval of block party request, Evans Street between Mallard Avenue and Greenwood Court, August 5, 2014. Resolution 13-349, approval of block party request, Ida Street between Frederick Street and Franklin Street, August 5, 2014. Resolution 14-350, approval of block party request, West Nevada Avenue between Jackson Street and Wisconsin Street, August 5, 2014. Resolution 14-351, disallowance acclaimed by Jesse Anderson. Resolution 14-352, approved special Class B licenses, operator licenses, and taxi cab driver licenses. Anybody else want, one last chance, coming forward? If not, I'll bring it back to council for any questions or discussion on any particular items, and ask if any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration.
One comment.
Mr. Cummings, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a comment on resolution 14-334, and that is the approval of the conditional use, use permit for downtown overlay district. This is the Varsity Club. I want to, you know, thank the owner of this property for working with the Lammerx Commission and the Plan Commission to re, retain or get as close to the original look of that building as it was. It was originally an auto dealership back in the 50s. I recall it as a Gibson Chevrolet dealership, but it was just, it was a great project to retain the architecture of pretty much a 1920s building. And I think it's just going to enhance the, the look of downtown, again, as we put more properties back as close as we can to their original use. So, thank you to the owner, the Plan Commission, and Lammerx Commission.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Herman.
This is a pointed question, I, on resolution 14-334. Plan Commission approved it July 1st. Can they start remodeling before council approves it? No? I need city staff to, it's just a clarification, because I know you started. But I thought council had approved it first. Just for future, that's all I'm trying to get here. If the Plan Commission approves it, then why does it come in front of council if they can start the project without council approval?
Well, I'm not sure how far he is on the project. He can start part of his project, and he can get permits, but the, the end product of, of the windows, he would still have to, he would still have to have gotten approval to do what he wants to do prior to the end of that project. I don't know what his permit is for, I haven't, I haven't seen what the permit is, and I haven't seen what that.
I just go by it this morning, and I noticed they're taking out the front doors already, and I think it took out a window. I'm, it's more of a clarification for me.
It's, you typically can start work on a building permit that may or may not reflect the final approval from the council that you're doing. For example, if council didn't approve this tonight, they could still, could still continue to do work, they just wouldn't have an overlay district upon which they could get some of the final product. They would have to change the final product that they were putting together, but they can get started to get the ball rolling and, and do the, start the demo work.
And the other aspect is that they could move forward with the process for those parts that are compliant with the zoning ordinance.
Okay, and that's just, it's a clar, clarification for me, not, not a, anything against the owner by any means. So I just want to make that clear, it's just a good question for my personal. And then, go ahead, Sean.
I just wanted to ask if we could pull resolution 14-333 from the consent agenda and order on that separately?
333 has been pulled for separate consideration. Anybody else want to pull anything, or have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items? Yeah, Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 14-343, I guess I want a little more clarification, exactly what's going on. I received the phone call from Mr. Decker last night, referenced this. Apparently, they're originally going to do the artwork on the sidewalk, and then in reading the information for the event, it sounds like they're now going to go to boards, do the artwork, and display it, which I would think makes more sense than drawing it on the sidewalk where nobody can really see it. But there seems to be a controversy to what was originally submitted as a proposal, and then what came down to the bottom. So just a little more clarification.
Mr. Decker was not the applicant, Sandy was the applicant?
Right, I read that, I didn't see his name at all in the application, that's why I'm a little confused to what his, and he didn't get into great detail what his involvement is, other than I believe he said he was going to be an artist for the event. So, I guess.
I can address it from the Special Events Committee. She can jump in if she needs to. We reviewed it, there was a concern with, as we have any time, with the color vibes and some of the other events, too, anything that goes on the streets of the sidewalks that has the potential to go into the stormwater system. Our stormwater permit through the DNR prohibits any kind of discharge into that stormwater system, so that's why we have our ordinances about, you know, grass clippings in the street and other things, is we are not allowed to have any kind of discharge into that stormwater system. So when the application came in, we first explored, because we weren't sure if chalk did or did not fit under that, it, we got a clarification from the DNR that they, that would be treated similar to the color runs. We had some back and forth, working through that issue, and then the applicant came in and came up with the alternative of placing it on boards, and I guess, since you're up, I'll let you address that. That's the, what's actually before the council tonight is to, is to place it on boards rather than on the sidewalk.
I, Sandy, I live 856 County Road I. For the downtown, for the chalk walk, traditionally, the chalk wa, the chalk art is, is displayed on sidewalk and/or roads. And it's time-limiting, three to four days, and most of the cities that do it, the elements take care of it. So when we ran into some obstacles with, with the DNR, and even after talking to the DNR, we just regrouped and came up with a Plan B, which is to put it on specially painted boards with gesso paint, which looks and acts like, like adherent and whatever for the chalk. So the chalk is all going to be contained on boards, which serendipitously, people are getting excited about because we will have them in the stores downtown for the month of September versus three days. But they will be created on, on 400 North Main Street, they'll be created on Market Street and on Opera House Square. So we'll have the feel of a true chalk walk, and we've been coordinating with the city of Wausau, and they've been gracious about giving us everything we needed. Mr. Decker is going to be an artist if he does the, the entrance fee and that's it, but I think he wants it to be the pure form. The committee is fine with putting it on boards and... The committee is fine with putting it on boards, and it is what we're doing right now. We will reassess that and see what we do next year if this is a go. So...
Thank you.
But yes, originally, we did put it on for the sidewalk and in the parking spots of the road.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else, Mr. Herman?
Not on that one. I have one more question, reference resolution...
You have the floor.
Fourteen dash three forty, which is the Winnebago Special Viral Events. They're looking at doing dye? Is that on, I think I'm familiar with, it's the shirts that they wear for the run, but are they, I see cleanup in here, and now that, is that for the run, or is it the dye that gets off the shirts onto the ground? Are we...
You wear kind of a white shirt, is my understanding. And as you run along, people throw a mixture of cornstarch and food coloring on you, and it dyes the shirt.
That's going to go into the stormwater, it's the same as the dye in the chalk, isn't it?
No. That's got, the conditions that are on it are for that purpose, to keep it from entering. They also had to meet conditions to keep it from entering the stormwater system. And same kind of deal, we kind of went back and forth with them. And Steve Godey, with the Department of Public Works, approved the final plan that they submitted for how to clean that up and prevent stuff from getting into the stormwater system.
And this is connected to the Winnebago County Fair, I believe, right?
Yes.
An event for the fair? Okay. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? Mr. Fitzgerald, anybody else? Or we're just pulling the one? Anybody else? Questions? I'll ask for a motion and a second regarding the consent agenda minus item fourteen dash three-three-three.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the consent agenda minus fourteen dash three-three-three? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the consent agenda minus fourteen dash three-three-three.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanskey?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay. That takes us to items removed from the consent agenda. And we have an item that was removed from the consent agenda, which is item resolution fourteen dash three-three-three. I'd ask for a motion, second, on resolution fourteen dash three-three-three.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let the council and the rest of the public know I'm going to vote President on this one. My business has a relationship with Bank First National, and it'd probably be best that I vote President.
Okay. Did you need to say anything at this point?
Do you want to say anything, Alan?
Okay. Any other questions, discussions? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on resolution fourteen dash three-three-three.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanskey?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Takes us to new resolutions. Resolution fourteen dash three-five-three, approve partial release of development agreement and driveway license agreement for portion of 1090 North Washburn Street. Quick trip. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second on resolution fourteen dash three-five-three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Herman?
I don't know if we have to do a special amendment or some, something different. There was some recommendation by the city staff in the resolution fourteen dash three-five-three that condition a complete release undeveloped Block Two, CMA 6720, written consent from the convenience store investments be obtained. Do we have to, is that part of the resolution, or is that something separate that you want to make sure that that is...
It's part of the resolution, and actually, I've already seen the draft, and they included that with it. So, we should be good.
Because the way it was worded, it made it sound like you wanted something more than just the basic resolutions. That was my question.
We're good.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay.
All right, Lawrence, for your expertise. Okay. Any other questions, discussion on resolution fourteen dash three-five-three? Okay. If not, take the roll call vote on resolution fourteen dash three-five-three.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Hanskey?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay. It takes us to council discussion, direction to the city manager, and future agenda items. Future agenda items, budget workshop on July 23rd, which is coming up real quick, like tomorrow night, 5:00. We try to run those for a couple of hours, like 5:00 to 7:00, as best we can to keep them with that. So, push that for tomorrow night. Discuss workshop for update on economic development, Go EDC. Mr. Peck?
Well, I had asked to put this on the agenda based on some feedback that I had gotten on some of the things related to Go EDC, and there was some things, there were some, there was some information included in our packet, rather voluminous, that I'm still working through. So, I think what I'll do is I'll reserve this at this time, possibly put it back on another one, unless any other council member wants to discuss this at this time.
Anybody else? Okay. So, we'll put it in a holding pattern for now. Okay. Reschedule a budget workshop for August 13th. I suspect this has to do with the reschedule of the council meeting from August 13th.
Yes. When we started bumping things, we realized that we had scheduled, or tentatively scheduled, the budget workshop for the 13th. Obviously, the council meeting got bumped because of the primary election. So, just looking for some feedback from council on when you would like the second budget The second budget workshop was a good deal of discussion about debt. So, just to give you an idea of what, what the primary discussion would be, it'll really be that, along with any direction the council may want to give me on any type of budget policy, as the departments are finalizing their, their departmental operating requests. Those, that's primarily the two issues for that meeting. So, just to give you a rough idea of what we'll be discussing, and then, when you want to hold it is entirely up to council.
Would it be appropriate to talk about that tomorrow night at the end of the meeting, seeing on where we end up tomorrow night, that you're going to cover a number of items tomorrow night?
I thought somebody might suggest that. So, that would make sense. You'll, you get a good feel for where you are.
So, we can set the date and see where we are and see what we want to have discussed. Is that reasonable? So, people could bring calendars, and we could set that next meeting up. It's just one day away, so I don't think we've lost it. Yes, Allison Osby?
Sure. I just wanted to remind staff and council that negotiations, in order for me to be a part of the strategic planning session at the beginning of the month, I was actually supposed to be in St. Louis. I negotiated to this date, because we actually had the budget on a different day, and then it got moved after the arrangements had already been made. So, you know, certainly, my apologies to staff and the council that I'll be out of state tomorrow.
Anything else on this? I do have one other item here, I want to make mention at the mayor's breakfast, will be mayor's community breakfast that we've had on yearly basis, a 25th annual one, will be on August 1st at the Leech. Will go from 6:00 to 10:00 in the morning. Hopefully, if council members are available, they can serve coffee and talk to people in formal way, if that's possible. I appreciate if you kind of let me know if you're going to be there. That would be helpful. We'll go from 6:00 to 10:00, $5. Hopefully, we'll have lots and lots of people there. Okay. Citizen statements to council. This is a second opportunity for citizens to come up and make any comments that they would like to make at council at this particular point in time. To do come up, again, would like to name an address, limit the comments to no more than five minutes, speak directly to the council. Don't talk about other things on the agenda, and no electioneering. I see no one coming forward. I see someone coming forward.
My name is Patricia Geener, and I had some new neighbors move in. I'm glad we have some new neighbors. Mr. Nupke sold his property. We're just, we're just trying to help the gentleman out, you know? They have these neighborhoods watch people. You know, they all want to be in it, but when things go wrong, they don't want to be in it. You know, the gentleman bought the place, it's from Beavis. And it's been going on, even when Mr. Nupke had it. So, I hope the people understand that this guy bought the property, that he bought it to enjoy, and not for people to go over and do things on his property. He's talking, I heard, he told me the other day, he's probably going to fence it in, because he wants the people not to be on the property. He bought it for other things to do with.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward? Seeing no one coming forward. Who'll go next? The city manager announces a statement. Mr. Rolla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items of purchase that we wanted to notify council about. These were both cooperative purchases. The first one was a truck for the Parks Department. That was available through the state of Wisconsin. The second one had to do with some, the traffic control devices that were, you got my memo on Friday about the safe routes to school, how we're actually not going to accept the grant because of all the hoops we have to run through. One of the hoops that we were going to have to run through is, even though it was US Communities Cooperative Purchase, they were not going to let us use the Cooperative Purchase Program through the grant. That was one of the frustrating issues that we had. And the price here was so outstanding that it was hard to pass up. So, we decided to pass up on the grant, and staff, Mr. Collins, Mr. Godey, have both been very creative in trying to figure out a way to do it within our existing budget, including the budget that was put together for this. So, while we're disappointed that we're not getting the grant, you're going to get the same value at both South Parks Middle School as well as Jefferson at 9th and Minnesota. Happy to answer any questions regarding either of those purchases, if you'd like. The master planning services for Menominee Park, FEH Associates has been selected to do that work. They have experience dealing with municipal zoos, including small municipal zoos like ours. The schedule for Tiff 27, we are in the process of finalizing the draft agreement. Our goal is to actually have the draft agreement for council this weekend, so you'll have it two and a half weeks in advance of the council meeting. So, you can read it. If you have any questions, contact city attorney Lawrence or Mr. Davis to get any questions answered on that. And then, the last item that I had, although I have one more in addition to my number 42, just a little plug. East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission is assisting us with the visioning process for the riverfront. The first of those workshops starts on August 6th, which is before the next council meeting. So, I figured, here is my opportunity to plug it. That one's going to be held over at the Convention Center on August 13th. It sounds like it'll be in competition with the council meeting, but it will not be. That will be held over the noon hour, 11:00 to 1:00 over at Beckett's. That was, it's not exclusively for businesses, but it's designed more for, for businesses that want to go during the day. And then, the final one will be on August 20th over at the Senior Center. So, trying to mix it up and get some variety of input. So, hopefully, we'll get some really good input as we start to create a vision for our riverfront. And then, I couldn't help but notice, so I thought I'd just mention it, the mayor read off a lot of different block parties for August 5th. That has to do with National Night Out. A lot of neighborhood associations are doing block parties or other similar events. Mr. and Ms. Palmieri were here plugging theirs. There are a lot of them out there. If you are available on August 5th, I would encourage you to, to plan a couple in. You can't do all of them. I tried last year, I failed miserably. Once you get stuck, and every person you greet, they hand you a brat. There are only so many brats you can eat in the evening, and my limit was three, and that was probably too many anyway. So, I'd encourage you to go. It's a wonderful event. And I would expect that Chief Groyle will be, the nickname for the, the new vehicle is C-COV, Community Command Outreach Vehicle, or Command and Community Outreach Vehicle, excuse me. The C-COV will be out a lot that night. Hopefully, it'll make the rounds quite a bit throughout the evening. Encourage council to go to that as well. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment.
Okay.
Do we, you, does the clerk want us to notify her if we're going to any of these things, so that if there's three or four?
We'll just notice the whole bunch of them. So, where you go...
Make it city easier.
Yeah. I think we're going to have, I think, as many as eight to 10 of these. So, you may want to plan to spread yourself out that evening.
Okay. That takes us to a motion to go into closed session. Three items here. I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to make the motion.
I make a motion to go into closed session. Three items mentioned. A, the common counsel for the city of Oshkosh may convene into closed session pursuant to section 19.85-1G of the Wisconsin statutes to confer with legal counsel who will give legal advice concerning strategy to be adopted in anticipation of litigation in which the city may become involved pertaining to a claim related to a promissory note executed by the redevelopment authority for the city of Oshkosh for property owned by the redevelopment